I'm not sure how it goes in different buildings. I don't have a presentation necessarily for anything, just a lot of different topics that we could cover on, or I can cover with you if you have questions about any of them. Feel free to just shoot anything out. I know there's so much stuff that goes on here that probably gets publicized a little more than anything else in the district in terms of buildings and some bigger events. So especially this time of year, after Friday, and then we've got Sage Awards, Top Scholar Awards, Senior Awards, graduation, choir concert, band concert, like every night something. So senior nights, lab day nights. So I know we get to the end of the week and we're just making through one more week, make it through one more week. So we're kind of in that mode where everything's, it seems to be going well, but it's a lot of planning. So I know I got all them in here, but they're gonna rush off to, you know, between preparing for next year, because we're in master schedule mode, so trying to figure out all of those kinds of things. We're trying to get out student schedules, we're trying to finish the master, Casey just ran the master schedule, so fixing all the errors and all the courses and making sure kids can get as many other courses that they sign up for as possible. And getting teachers their schedules, hiring into those positions. And then we're getting ready to take out the student's schedules so that they can see what they have, get those aired by the end of the year. So there's kind of this whole like preparing for next year mode that we're in, while at the same time trying to finish out this year and make sure seniors have their credits and everyone's gonna be able to walk the can and we get ready for graduation and all their honors along the way. So it really, the days just go flying by so fast because there's so much to get done. But for the most part, it's been going really well. So we made it through prom on Friday night and that was good. Actually, just a really good day all, so I'm not sure that Friday here could have gone any better than it went. So I could probably just start there because one of the topics, if I just go back to Friday, is the whole idea of senior projects, which we've been working on for a few years now. I would say that this year went a lot better than I thought it would go. We're down, like, we went through all of that process all year and I think, what, we have like seven kids or something like that that we have to get through here in the next month? Which I was a little bit fearful that that might be like seventy-seven kids or something. But we weren't, it didn't go perfectly because we still have to figure out a lot of things along the way. But it went really, it went really well. We have a lot of things that we know that we want to do next year to help that run more smoothly. It was very important to get our teachers in front of them all on Friday, which we got a lot of feedback from our teachers that that was a really important thing for them to just see what was going on and what the kids were being asked to do, what they did well, what they didn't do well. So that was, that was really important. So we got a lot of good feedback there. I know you get different kinds of feedback, but it's been so positive what we've gotten from the kids. Last night I was out and there was, there was a kid, we are allowing some juniors in the process to work ahead and kind of work on their project. So I walked out last night and then one of our junior soccer players is running a youth soccer camp out here as his senior project and there's about twenty-five of them out there. And they're just running around and there's parents there and they're just talking about how cool this is and they know that it's a senior project and what a neat project this is. So we met with seniors yesterday and I just told them that. Like, the feedback we got from like some community members involved and parents and students was all kind of the same way, like, "We didn't know about this." Like, I mean, some approaches, "I don't want to do this, I don't know why we have to do this." And then on the back end, like, almost everyone that walked by was like, "That, that was good. Like, I got something out of that." And so the community impact is what we're hearing a lot of too. I mean, that's two-hundred-and-fifty kids, most of them that had some kind of project that involved a youth group or a church or one of our schools or something. And so that impact, a lot of stories about, "Well, we're gonna continue to do that now that they've started it." So we're, all those stories are rolling in. So we were in the lobby on Friday as they were coming out and you could see the nerves as they walked in and then on the way out, they were just smile ear to ear, like, duh. So we are gonna play that up a little bit more next year and I think have a little bit bigger scene for them as they come out to celebrate what they've done and the impact. So in year one, we just, we kind of had to shift based on what we were able to do and how quickly we could put it together and we changed our minds on a few things that we saw weren't going well. So this year was really learning and Mary was like, she about had a breakdown in January and February just because the whole weight of all of it, like, to think about. I think she got a hundred-and-twenty portfolio that came rolling in like last week and she's gotta look through all of it and like get them all cleaned up. So it's, it got overwhelming at times and especially for her because she's got a plan, all that. But we sat down and it's just like, "Look, it's just not going to go perfectly. Like, we're gonna have, things are gonna go wrong, we're not gonna get things planned the way that we want." But that's what this first year is about because it really, I mean, next year's when grad pathways kicks in. So the plan all along, talking back two or three years ago, was we needed to get this year in so that we could do this, so we could have one year where we work out all the teams. We know it's gonna, it's gonna be rough. I had planned the senior class yesterday because they didn't get the time to prepare that other groups will get. They didn't get the information ways that other groups will get. So unfortunately, they just, they had to go through it in a rough year or two. So this year's junior class already has more information, they've already been planning, we're already gonna have something in their schedule. So there's no doubt that I, in the next year, it will, it will run more smoothly. The kids will be more informed, we'll have things set up for them to kind of celebrate that accomplishment. So that was all on Friday and it went, I just wondered it well, so.
So Steve, have you thought about, in that process, because you mentioned the two-hundred-and-fifty seniors going through this, about a recycle project, so a great example that youth soccer, right? If somebody, the next senior steps in and takes that, tries to improve on that, right? Keep, keep it going, you know, is that acceptable on a project?
It would depend. We would probably request that they, they add something, that they do something different. Actually, I was talking to the mom of the Patrick student who was running the soccer camp last night, I was talking to her for a little while and she said the parents were asking about that. Like, "Well, this is one year, like, will you do this next year? Will you be able to do that?" And she said, "Well, Patrick's kind of hoping to pass it off to someone else." And so we probably would encourage that and that's what we told them. But we're, each project we're trying, they need to say then how it's unique to them, what did they do? So maybe it's picking it up and, and do something a little different or do it a different, add something to it. And we've allowed, we've tried to do that because some students have requested like that there may be, like, two students want to do the same project. And what we've said is like, "They could be related, but you have to do your unique parts to the program." So could it come together as like one big event, maybe? But you have to show how you're doing your project completely independent of what they're doing, but it could be together. So we've tried to be flexible and that's one thing that we heard from when we sat down with the schools that we went to visit, where they were just like, "Don't be so rigid." Like, if you do, like, we learned that we've had to not do that because you're just gonna make life difficult on yourself and the kids. So, so we're trying our best to lead into their passion. So if they're really passionate about something, that's really been our message. And so they get frustrated, they're like, "I can't think of anything, I don't know what to do." We're like, "What are you passionate about? Find something and like, we will create a project around it." And so that really helped when we told the kids that because then they started. We got some weird things from us at times, but we're like, "All right, we can think about that." And so if there's a kid on the soccer team, it's like, "Why don't we pick up on that?" We just say, "That's fine, but you gotta do something different, you gotta add to it, you gotta do something that makes it unique to you." Yeah, yeah, sorry. Yep. Yeah, so I said, it's hard to throw all this together. We've got people running in every different direction right now.
Casey, is this topic, do you mind if I talk about the Greenwood Scholarship? I think it's important for the board to know that Lincoln Education Connection applied for a grant through the Brandon again foundation. And part of that was three thousand dollars for scholarships. So Brandon again approved three one-thousand-dollar scholarships for the top three senior projects. So the first scholars committee will review the applications and they're looking for community impact, sustainability. And it was kind of late in the year when, you know, it wasn't approved until January. So we threw it out there, we've got some applicants. Last I looked, there were twenty-five applicants, which is good for a scholarship. And, but the juniors going into their senior year will have a leg up on it. But, so hopefully, that's a good thing, we can show Brandon again some data and continue to offer that.
Yeah, and I guess that's the kind of stuff I'm talking about. It's like, that, that idea came throughout this year as we're kind of like trying to figure out how this fits into everything. So again, the senior class, you know, had, had they had that information before, maybe they adjust their project, maybe they try to do something different, maybe they expand on their project. So those are all things that like, it's unfortunate and some students jumped in and were like, "Okay, I'll, I'll try that." But it's, they kind of had to do it on the run and we had to. So we've just adjusted as we've gone along. So we've tried to morph what kind of fits what we're doing with what we've heard from other places, with what we've experienced throughout the year. So it's just been one big trial here. So some of the things that we've tried at work, some of them haven't. Some of the advice we were given seemed to played out, some of it not. For instance, like Greenwood told us, don't, don't have them write a big five-page essay as a part of that's what they do. They were like, they run it through their English class and I, it may be here, it occurred somewhere else, but when we talked to them behind the scenes, they're like, "Don't do it, don't do that." Like, "You're gonna fight this essay and you're gonna spend all your time fighting it and you're gonna lose the value of the project because you're gonna fight all, you're gonna find your time fighting all these kids on writing some essay and doing all this stuff, which sounds good, but in the big picture of what you're trying to get them to do, you're gonna, you're gonna lose it all." And so now, I'm not sure that that's what they would be saying to their, you know, to their administrators or to, to other people, they may not voice that, but behind the scenes, you're like, "Don't do it, don't do it." And so we tried to take some of that stuff in. So I would say if you see anything, hear anything, because you do hear different things and from kids or parents or community members, like, share it with us. And because really what we're, what we're doing is kind of creating it as we see it and what, you know, the conversations we have. And I know that the conversations that we have with students and with parents isn't always what's everyone else is saying. So if you hear anything else, share it with us because this summer, we will sit down and we've already changed what we're doing for next year in that one thing we found is we took a group of about seventy-five seniors this year and we, we were looking at the numbers kind of scared that there were so many of them. And we have an incentive group that goes into the TIC Center, which are students that basically are excelling on the academic side of things, just pretty much all A's, they're cruising, they got everything done. And we thought, "Well, we'll, let's try this, if we just kind of give them the project and kind of say, 'Okay, you're on your own and we'll just check in.'" Like, I had a group of about ten or twelve of them. And Scott took some, Polly took some different, and we just kind of like, we're their mentors but from afar. And we said, "Just run with this project." So it was kind of, again, kind of the guinea pig idea of like, "Let's just see how this goes. They might be able to just do it on their own and then we can focus more over here." They didn't, it didn't go as well as we thought. Like, even those students, like, left to like, you know, they had a Google Classroom, they had all the information, they just had to read it and they had to follow deadlines, but it just, it, it was more difficult on them than we thought it would be. So we're not, like, so for next year, that it, we're doing, we're giving them some more freedom, but they have to check in with us every week. They'll be assigned a day of the week where they have to come in and sit down with Mary and Mary will go through everything with them to make sure every week they're on a timeline. What are they doing? Are they, do they have this turned in? Because it didn't go as we thought it would go. So something we learned and we, we didn't hold it against them, but we, we spent the year just kind of, "Man, I can't believe they can't follow a timeline or they can't..." But it's just harder than that, where, I mean, they got a lot going on. They got, you know, we found they got a lot of classes going on, they've got a lot of activities going on, so. But once we were able to then, I spent more time with my group and once I was able to focus on it, then they just ran with it and they were done with that and moved on. But they needed somebody there to kind of push and be like, "Nope, this, here's the date, let's get going. Let's, what's your idea? Let's, let's explore that idea a little bit, let's, who are you talking to?" So they just needed more guidance than we thought they might need.
So who's spoken, Mary, besides yourself?
No one.
So we need to get Mary's support? If you got two, if you got two-hundred-and-fifty kids that's gonna have to check in with her, she can't?
I think it's played out like, I, I don't know, I don't know long-term. I think she, I think she'll be capable of doing it and I think she feels she'd be capable of doing it. This year was just gonna be really hard because we're, we're, it's not just checking on kids, it's like creating a whole program. And like, again, some things worked and some things didn't. So when we try something and it doesn't work, then that's a lot of work to go back and like, "Oh, that didn't work. So let's try this and let's do that." So I-
I mean, you probably looking at the next three to five years is pretty tough. If you create this, right? But once you get into a stream-
Yeah.
And, you know, you get into the, the click of it, it all goes smooth, right?
Yeah.
But if she needs help, can we all let the board know?
No.
Talk about the class that-
Yeah, we've added, okay. We have added a lot of course, well, not a lot, but we've, over time, we've had courses that go to the middle school to get credit. Students get credits in a lot of ways, only forty credits that they need anyway. And so what we've, that process, what it's led to is a lot of times seniors have a lot of room in their schedule anyway. I mean, when we talked a while ago, it was so that it could open up their senior year to be able to do things a little bit differently. So we've got kids going out on internships, they go to cadet teaching, they go to C-9, they do all these things. So they do have room in their schedule. So what we've created at the end of the day is we've taken, if this'll make sense, PCC that used to be a freshman requirement, covered a lot of like job, resume. I mean, a lot of things that go into almost like a senior project in a presentation. How do you present? What do you wear? How do you go into an interview? They're getting all that as a freshman, we made it a freshman requirement. And there were different reasons for that. But some of the feedback we got from them was like, "That's too early." Like, "We're getting a lot of that stuff, but that's not really on our brains yet. We're just walking into high school and it's, we don't see the value in all of that information." So now that we're moving a lot of those skills, those employment skills, which is what senior project's really all about, is to display your employability skills, to be able to present and carry yourself and organize and plan and collaborate and all that kind of stuff. Now they're gonna be doing that as like end of junior through their senior year, mainly senior year. We're taking some of those skills in that PCC class and moving it to basically a senior class where they'll have some release time. So during that class, they will work on their senior project, they will talk about. Because one stuff we noticed, their presentation skills weren't always the best. The way that they even put together a presentation, you know, we'd see stuff where there's a slide and it's basically a giant paragraph. And it's like, you don't, it's not necessarily how you present, is to put everything you're gonna say on a slide and try to read through it. So we're gonna spend more time, those are just things that we missed out this year, things, trying to figure out what they need. So we're moving that to the end, it'll open up their schedule. So sixth and seventh period, they will have, one day a week they'll be required to be here if it fits into their schedule, some of them won't, we've got other plans for that, but. So let's say a student has like, Wednesday's their day, they would stay sixth and seventh period with Mary. She's free every day of the week, sixth and seventh period, just to meet with seniors about their projects and all of these different skills. The other days of the week, they're actually released to go do their project. So now that's more time, so at one, one o'clock, one-thirty every day, they would be done. But there's the time in their schedule to go work on their project, meet with someone. But then one day a week, they have to stay here, meet with Mary and make sure, and she just checks with every single kid, "Where are you? What's going on?" So I don't know if that's, I mean, it's the pull and send of those skills.
So there are kids who finished their projects early. So if they do that, say, first semester, what are they gonna do sixth and seventh period?
It's only one semester.
It's only one semester for each?
So we have half of our kids doing their senior project in fall, half of them doing it in the spring. So that splits it up, so we don't have like sixty here and three-hundred here, three-hundred-and-fifty here. So it's split up equally and it seemed like that worked in our master schedule. I think it actually, if you ran the master schedule, it actually worked. So that other semester, they'll just go to school like they normally would. So it's not a year-round and they just, they just do that for one semester and then just-
Revision in the run of the month through town.
Right, right. And we don't, we definitely don't want that. And only, Scott, I think it's maybe, maybe half to two-thirds of them, that even fits in their schedule. So if they have so many classes as a senior that they want to take or need to take, then that won't even fit. We actually have, they take a study hall during the day and they do it during study hall. So we, we have to account for the fact that some may like go to C-9 and then have to be here those last periods at both semesters. They don't have room in their schedule to put those two periods in there. So they would have a study hall, last resort would be, we have a coach class on Wednesday and Thursday, they would be in a coach, we would move them to a coach. So we really have three different levels, there's coach, study hall, and then that release period. So the release period, it only if it works in their schedule, they want it. We're not forcing it, that's something some kids got worried about as they started looking at all the classes they wanted to take and they're like, "I can't do that, like, I can't take two periods out because I wanna take this, this, and this." So we're like, "Yeah, we're not forcing that, you take your classes, we'll put you in the study hall or we'll put you in coach, we'll work with you that way." So we didn't wanna force that onto somebody's schedule, who wanted or needed to take some stuff. The one thing is we just know we have to have time with them every week to sit down and make sure that we're keeping them on track and helping them with their project. Because once we did, then it went, they, they went with it, but they needed guidance, especially that first step. What am I gonna do? What, how, how is this gonna work? And then once we kind of got their wheels turning, then they just kind of like, they were gone, so.
Steve, one other question I think that we're hearing, I know, or I've heard. Some of the kids are the top performer kids, they're, you just hinted, their schedule is full, everything is in there. What did Columbus Eastern Greenwood do to address those kids? Because that's one of the things, you know, where they're saying, "Hey, this is just a checkbox, but I've got all these other things that I've already got checkboxed to, to, to get employability, to get that." Did you talk to Columbus Eastern Greenwood to say, "How did you address those kids?" Because I know we're hearing some of that from some parents that went through that first year.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think, I mean, you might know better than I. I don't know that they had exemptions for kids to not do them.
Well, they, they forced them to English class, that's what they did, that's how. When I went to East, they, everybody had English class and so the issue was, that's your English grade. So you're right, they're hammering to get their English grade done.
What we've tried to do, sitting down with them, is because I would contend, I mean, okay, we've got those kids that are really busy, we have kids that go work jobs as soon as they leave here and have to raise money. We've got kids who have families who have nothing, that go home to nothing. Like, it's, 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 we've found it more difficult for the kids who don't have the guidance at home to do it than the other end. So what we've tried to sit down and do with them is just say, "Okay, you've got all of these things going on, then have your project be about all of those things that are going on. And like, don't go find something else." Like, if you're really involved in whatever. So that's where I said we have like the soccer camp going on, like, what are you passionate about? What are you doing? Make your project about what you're doing. So the kids that are going and getting jobs, we're like, "Okay, on your job site, what are, can you come up with something that you notice at your work that could help them or that could benefit them, or maybe there's some volunteer or maybe there's some, like, connected to that?" So what we've tried to do is say, "We understand you're all really busy or you've got things going on, but like, connect it to what is making you so busy or what you're doing." And so in the kids that camp, we've actually had a, I've got a kid right now in the TIC Center who is always in there and he's in there doing a project now, he's lagging behind. But with Emily Silverman taking on a big project there while he's here during the day, which isn't how we designed the program, but it just isn't going to work, it just isn't gonna work. We had a kid clean the entire, where the, the outdoor area, I'm kind of thinking of the word there.
Courtyard?
The courtyard. Went through and just cleaned the whole courtyard and like set things up as his project, just to, to give back. So we're, we are trying to help them, but it's really about, that's where we know we need the time. So if they come in and they say, "I just got way too much stuff going on," we're just like, "Well, what's that? Wait, what's that stuff and what's the project about?" So I do think we've been really helpful in those ways and we haven't heard a ton of that. We, we had, on the front end, we get complaints, on the back end, we get thank yous, is what we get a lot of. Because on the front end, it's just like, "I don't want to do this, it's one more thing that I have to do." But then once we go through it, at least the feedback we've gotten from most students, not necessarily parents, because some of the parents just don't think it's a good thing. Like, they just don't, they just see it as like, "Why do we have to do this?" But on the other end, the kids typically come to us and are like, "That was fine, that, that was good, but..."
And one thing to think about, if the Brandon Grant goes through, it's having them come to the school board and actually present, you know, so if you do it in April, like, the twenty-second, then a year from now, you know, they have those kids come and say, "Here's my senior project." And that way you all can, you can see firsthand. I know, Chris, you said, and Becky, did you sit in, Andy, anybody else? Brian, did you? It, it's really, it is really cool to see the kids do it, but maybe that's one thing you can put in there as part of that application, okay? You're agreeing to, if you win, you get to go to the school board and kind of share, you know, maybe not the whole presentation, but a little bit of the presentation. Oh, we can block out thirty minutes and have all three of them know. But that would be a good thing for, I think, for the community to see like, "This is what our kids are doing, this is, this is how impactful it is."
Yeah, and I think we, we probably need to be able to organize that a little bit better to share that, share those experiences, share what's going on.
Continue your-
Yeah, and so we, we could probably do that a little better.
So do you, do some of the projects require like a cost? Like, some of their ideas, like, like, I don't know, taking them to clean, right? So somebody wants to go clean something and, and they're not able to afford the stuff to go clean. I mean, do you notice that or is it more like service things where there's still cost?
We told them they're, they're, they shouldn't be raising money. Like, whatever, they can have things donated, they should not be raising. We don't want money coming into the students and then them be responsible. Like, that's just not a good thing now.
I mean, like, for whatever service they're providing?
Oh.
That's what I, like, is there, if there was a cost involved? Like, I'm just thinking, if he had to go out there and clean that courtyard and he named it a power washer to clean, you know what I mean?
He borrowed.
You like help them?
Yeah, we have, yeah. And so I, I guess, again, that's more of that like communication piece to it. Like, once we find out what they're doing, what they have in mind, like, we, we really are there to support. So like, all of the stuff that came out here, like, we had people bring it in or the school equipment or whatever that they would use. So it really is about figuring out what they wanna do. I think that's maybe where some of them got overwhelmed, it's like, "I don't..." But that's the whole, that's the whole experience, like, "How do I get this done? Like, how do I find the means to get it done?" So like that struggle when people wanna, we don't want our kids to struggle. I mean, that's, that's unfortunately where we're kind of at right now. So on that end, it's like, "Yeah, there's some hurdles here, how do I overcome?" Like, "I want to do this project, but I don't have the equipment. I want to do, I want to build this, but I don't have this." Like, so where, that's what we're here for, is to say, "Okay, let's think about that a little bit. We can help here," or, or maybe it's like, "Well, I don't know if we'll be able to do that. Let's rethink how we're gonna do that." So that's where I actually think the big smiles come from, when they walk out of there, is it's like, they struggled, they didn't wanna do it, they didn't think it was valuable, they had to struggle through it some and then at the end, they're like, "I got it done." Like, and so I'm, we're seeing that piece of it. I don't know that everyone else sees all of that part of it. So then on the outside, it's like, "I don't think this, I don't want to do this." So I think that's the value in it though, is like, there, there are some hurdles. Like, if you wanna do something, you gotta go talk to somebody, you gotta call somebody, you gotta go talk to your neighbor, you've got, and, you know, what are you gonna have to do to get this done? And that there is the employability skills, is trying to figure it out. But there's struggle in that, so if we've got a struggle and we've got other things going on, like, the instinct is to be like, "Wow, I wanna do it, like, just, why am I doing this?" So, but on the back end of that, we saw, we saw the smiles, we saw the effort. I mean, even it's kids that we've never, I don't, Friday, Friday would have been a good day probably to have everybody here seeing them as they walked out, like, and knowing the kids that are walking into those rooms where you're like, "Oh my gosh, I can't even believe they're here." Like, "I can't even believe that..." Like, we are on the other end, like, "I can't believe they actually put this together and they're here and then they're all smiles walking out." So, so we have to kind of embrace the struggle a little bit and be like, "It's okay if they are kind of cranky and they don't wanna do it, we gotta drag them through." So I guess if it was gonna be easy, then it wouldn't, it wouldn't be as valuable, so.
Yeah, I once stayed in one of my groups that has had some mental health issues and was terrified to do this project. And I think you said you didn't, he was out in the hallway pacing back and forth and you didn't think he was gonna, to come in there. But he came in, it wasn't a great presentation, but, I mean, you could tell he had some pride after, afterwards that he was able to work through it.
Yeah. I told Lena before, I asked how he did because he was outside, he was like, "Whoa, whoa." Well, he was like so nervous and then like on the way out, he was just, like, smiling ear to ear. So it was, yeah. And it's good, it's good, it's good to have that experience because they gotta go to a job interview and they've got to like figure out how to solve problems and they're getting ready to take on all these life experiences. This is only a minor, minor example of trying to solve a problem and do so.
Steve, we're the parent mentor for this.
Yes. Like, the, the, the one group was, so actually, there's two levels, but that's where we've got to clean things up and we've got to organize that. The group in the TIC Center was the one that we kind of said, you're kind of on your own. And like, like I said, I had twelve of them, and I was just like, I'm just here if you need me. Like, I'm, I'm your person. And they're supposed to, on their project, go and find a second for, like, someone to actually, the idea would be that someone in that area, that field, someone who oversees it. So really, there should be two levels, there should be the school person. Everyone else is put into a coach class, where that coach teacher, what, so there might be twenty plus kids in that room, and that coach teacher, so we had senior coach teachers who were in there, and they were supposed to be checking on them weekly. Um, and again, that's where the organization of a problem wasn't, and just in year one was not as successful. It could be, because we're trying to organize all that. What do the teachers go over with them? What are the deadlines? And those were shifting from time to time. We're trying to figure out, we had, we quickly found out, we had to find some, we couldn't do four, you know, three hundred and fifty of them on a day in April. Like, we couldn't do it, so we started splitting them up, and some went in December, some went in January, some went in March, some went. So that we could spread it out so that we only had two hundred instead of three hundred and fifty on Friday. So, um, we just had to learn all of those things, but they should have had, really, two mentors, and we'll hit on that more. Someone that's directly related to the project, so, um, trying to, so for instance, the soccer one that's outside. Probably Tony Harris should be a mentor, because he's the coach of the soccer team, and is knowledgeable in that area, kind of oversee and verify that the project was done and what happened. And then internally, they could have a teacher who's in that coach, who would then kind of oversee just the struc, are you getting all the parts done of the project? So one oversees the project, one oversees the actual, like, activity, if that makes sense. So.
Is that heavy load for the teachers?
For those teachers? They volunteered, so that was, that's always helpful when they go into wanting to do it. Um.
If I can add, that's one of the ways, I think, community service, that course is gonna help next year. Instead of them being in place with teachers that are guiding them, Mary's gonna be more focused. She's gonna meet with them once a week, like Steve was talking about, and she's actually gonna go through, you need to be doing this, and this, and this, for that, coach teachers, saying, hey, don't forget to do these things, but she's really gonna be teaching them, and that's a credit course. So, you know, they're getting ready for that class, they're actually working through. And I think, Steve talked about that, seven, five in each semester, but then sixth and seventh period, we're gonna work in another twenty-five, thirty there with Mary. She, you talked about overloading her, she wants this, because she feels like she's more invested than the other teachers are. And I don't mean that bad towards those coach teachers, but that's just another responsibility for them, if they did volunteer for it. But she wants, wants the schedule kind of set up this way, so she can actually see these kids once a week.
Yeah. So I think more that the program gets set, and easier for her will, so, that's what I said. I, I, I think it'll, she'll, she'll feel a lot better this next year, and probably even a lot better the next year. Like, so I think each year as we go along, she's gonna be more and more comfortable with the program, to the point at which it probably should run better this year. And she does, she does get that teaching too, um, so she enjoys that, and that's a piece that she can continue to do. So she's got a lot going on, especially this year, but I want her going in, like, just, don't quit after, like, if you take this, you can't quit after year one.
I got a question.
Because I, this year's gonna be really rough.
What are you doing to leave those breadcrumbs? Because you know what, people do, people do come, like, hey, I'm, I'm gonna do something else, I want to teach here now. Is she documenting all this? So if someone does have to come in, here you go, you're the next person up for this spot, or, what are you guys doing?
Yeah. I mean, the projects themselves are, I mean, it's a, it's a, you know.
I mean, the behind the scenes of all the things that she stresses about.
Well, I think, I think that's helping, because it's gonna be incorporated into this course. The community service course outlined by the DOE is exactly the senior project.
Good. So if someone comes in there, they're just gonna be the next teacher for that, and they lead the charge. Okay. Because I think that's the big thing that I see sometimes. We get teachers, litaried pipers, right, they do a phenomenal job. And it's K to twelve, doesn't matter where, and then they leave, and all of a sudden, everybody's like going, that's what I wanted! Like, yeah, well, that person moved over here, and how do we do that? Because this is a pretty big rock in our journey, uh, to sustain it.
Yeah. And I know that's our goal, is to get the program set so that it is, it is a program. It's not, this is not, it's not Mary's vision, it's not, I mean, it, it's, it's a program that would be set. And so I meet with her regularly, if not weekly, especially this year, just where are we, what are we doing, what, what's, what stressors are going on? The project itself, with some few minor tweaks, that's been a really, this program that she's set up, like, the kids just have to follow. I mean, if they follow the script, the presentation does itself. So I mean, it really is like a step by step, you do this, then you do this, then you do this, then you do this, you're done. Like, and then here's your presentation, just all of these things right here. So it really is step by step, walks them through how to get this done. And so I think that part of it, I think, with some minor tweaking, is ready to go. It's the how does it work into the school day, and how do they get the supports, and who are they meeting with, that, you know, that could change over time. If our schedule changes, if our times change, all of those things, then would change the program around a little bit, so.
And those kids, we also have a, I think it's twenty-five kids next year, we're growing it as we go, twenty-five kids that are co-op kids. They go out and actually do their job, and so they can use that as their project too. So that's another group of twenty-five. You got the healthcare kids that can use that as part of their project. So we're trying to divvy it out as we go and build ways for kids to do it, like you were talking about, Dr. Lindemann. It's not just the senior project community service, it can be any of these multiple ways.
Yes.
What's this healthcare?
Healthcare, that's some really cool projects. And we had a girl come to Union. She partnered with a dental office, and they did a big dental hygiene program for the kids. Um, we had a student come to a couple of our sites and sit down and talk to the kids about our healthcare workers and what, you know, how they give back to the community, and then they all wrote thank you cards and their pictures, and she took those to JMH. We had a boy volunteer at Creekside, and he put together just gangs and activities, but then he finished it up by building the, some shelving storage units for their office, just to keep some stuff. Though, we've had some really great experiences with it.
Awesome. And I'm gonna tell you about one mine that I got, that presented to me. He had no clue what to do, his mom proceded, so he decided to crochet a blanket. He didn't realize how many hours that was gonna take, crocheted that blanket and learned. And after he got done, he had his blanket, his mom's blanket up there on the screen, and one blanket took him over twenty hours. So it was like, he could not believe that. And then he said, I bought like enough yarn, I didn't know how much to buy, I bought enough for about five blankets. I don't know what I'm gonna do with all that. So it was a learning experience for him, but he worked with his mom.
So our hurdles for next year is just to see how this class goes, the class at the end. So we'll have to make sure that we stay organized with that. Um, figuring out how we get them all in, um, I don't know if it's up in the air, but at least on our end, this past Friday was wonderful. Um, it was, it was perfect, um, in terms of how we could get that done. Uh, but I know that's not an easy thing on everybody else, um, in the district. But, uh, we want to play up that day. Ideally, we weren't, we want to turn the medallion area into just a big welcoming center that like, and we're trying to figure out what we want to do there, but we really want to play that up for seniors as they're done and they come out. We greeted them and kind of had snacks for them, and it was just a really cool moment, but we would really like to play up that really cool moment. So, um, whether that would be to bring board members, or to bring people in there and do that, so that when they're coming out of the Dali area after they're, after they're done, like, it's a celebration of that they are done, because that's kind of what they wanted to do, that's even the vibe we were getting from them, it's like, we're done. And so we, we were, just all those organizational things. Um, but like you said, we're gonna have a group going in the fall and a group going in the spring. So we kind of have that spring date set, we've got to figure out how we can pull that off in the fall. So we're gonna have to spend some time around how we get that done. Um, so. But all in all, it was a little stressful. Like I said, we had some, about January, February, some breakdowns, on whether it was gonna actually get done, but we were shocked when we went through. Like I said, I think we only have like seven kids that were really working on between now and graduation that we've got to get finished. So, uh, that's a really, I don't care what we do, if we do anything in our building and our entire class, and all we have is seven kids that don't, like, that's almost unheard of. So to say that they had to do these projects and that's all that we have left to do is kind of shocking, really, but in a good way. So.
That's amazing.
We could be handing out money, and we would not have seven kids show up. So it's, I think, it's, it's a good, good rate on that, so.
So Steve, if, if you don't have that e-learning day, which I don't, I don't remember if we're there with that, but. That's a group, I think, over the whole, the whole community, community member, um, list for the, for the presentations.
A lot will just be the, how, how we pull it off without, like, just even having the space to do it if everybody's in here. So I don't know if we move it to a Saturday, or we do it in an evening, or we do something like that. Um.
We have the e-learning day, we have, with three, we, if the board chooses the calendar, we can do one in April. We go to the prom, and we do one before. I will tell you, the copy superintendent just came up, it's topic, I don't care if you, I just think, it's not a big deal. There's some questions about why we did prom on Friday, uh, because of, you know, Saturday, if the kids could have a day off and we could still stay, you know, in school, that was one question, um, that came up. And so with the e-learning days, we just got the memo from the state this week on what that's supposed to look like, with the three virtual days. And then any extraordinary event, snow, et cetera. Um, so we, we have the ability to do it, but it's gonna then drive, us only have one left if something happens. So if it was a PD day or something like that, we would be eliminated on that. But there's no doubt about having a day like that in high school is a really great thing to get these finished.
And I, if we talked about that, I'd like to be engaged, because I read the same memo when I, it seemed like there's the ability to do things there, but, so I.
Yeah, so I, I just, we, in talking to, it's so confusing, I talked to Columbus, he's the Columbus superintendent, and he's like, I just don't know what it means. You know, because you gotta have half your staff involved in asynchronous opportunities.
I would be willing to figure out how we could do it at the high school, to meet the guidelines of the memo, if it meant that we could find a way to.
Well, it's not just, that's a district, it's not, it's the district calendar, so one eighty, so. You might do, do the high school, and everybody else stay in school, and that's a possibility in some of those things. So we could definitely.
Right. So I, yeah, I guess I'd be open for conversation, because anything that makes us go to figuring out how to get them all done on different days, I mean, it can be done, but if it's stretched out over ten different days, and I, the ability to just organize a day and work through it and, and have everything there and celebrate it in that way, I think it's much more efficient, productive, and meaningful than trying to spread it out over a whole bunch of different days, or do something, where, where we can't spend this. Like, that's one, probably the biggest aha from going all this, is like, it was more of a moment for the kids than I realized. And like, we need to celebrate that for our seniors, like, we need to make it a day, and we need to make it special. And so if we, the more that we spread it out and just be like, okay, check, check it off the box, and you're on this day, let's check it off over here, and you'll come in on this day and check it off, like, it just loses its meaning. And, and it's just more like one more thing that we gotta get done, because I'll, I'll just pick my day and get it done. And if we can make it more of a day where it's like special, like, this is our day, this is when we do it, this is how, you know, and really play that up, I think it draws more into like, making them feel like they accomplished something, and it's a big deal. Um, so that was, on the back end, that would be my thoughts. So. And having a, graduation, I know there's a prom question, and I don't know if you've got, if that question came from the order, that was from a parent.
That was from a parent, that was a copy of the superintendent wanted to know, why, why didn't you do it Friday night?
Yeah, I'm saying, one of the biggest things is cost. Um, some, um, many mobile venues can't hold us. I mean, like, we checked on the garment factory, but I know that got brought up, they can't hold us, they told us they can't, they can't handle that venue. So as we start to get bigger, we're bigger than some other, you know, any Green, Greenwood side, they, Greenwood had theirs there. We're just, we just bring more kids to prom, and they told us, no, we can't handle your, the amount of kids you bring. So we looked into that during, kind of when we looked at the last year, could we pull off prom? And we ended up having it in the gym, I mean, because the garment factory said they couldn't hold us. Um, and so the roof ballroom is a nice place, on a Friday night, it drops the price for our kids to like fifty dollars a ticket instead of eighty dollars a ticket, um, which is a big deal for, I mean, that's a big deal for our kids to not have to pay that kind of price to go to a nice venue and do something. So if we get it on that Friday night, it's much cheaper. Uh, that's one of the reasons. The other one is this time of the year, in May, if you throw anything, I mean, we can say it disrupts. So if we put it on Friday and we have school, it'll, you know, kids won't come to school, they'll leave early, they'll take off their lunch. You know, that's, if we have it on Saturday, it disrupts act, you know, other activities, all of the things. You know, there'll be twelve different events on Saturday, um, that no matter what Saturday we pick. So they, I don't know, balance it out. So we opt to go with the cost of it and save our kids money and plan it out. It's gone really well. I mean, I, again, there would be the argument of like, okay, why aren't they in school on Friday? But I don't know. Again, one of the biggest days for all of our kids, and it's a special day, I think it's not a day lost on, on our kids.
One thing I have a request, I've talked about this before, if the sponsor, remember, invite the board. Because I think that's, you know, a good thing, if even they don't show up at the prom, or they want to see a little bit. I think it's, it's really nice to say thank you for what you all do, and it's what you see the kids dress up. So, well, I just think that, just say, hey, you know, because, you know, we're gonna do more, we're gonna do superintendent and stuff, but it's a really nice thing to say, hey, it's a big pinnacle, it's kids, and if you guys want to come and do this, kind of be a part of the journey. Um, because that way, when a Friday night question comes up, they can say, you know what, I was there, and here's what went on. And those things, I think cost is the one we're hanging our hat on.
Yeah.
Because if you use the extracurricular at all, those things, parents are gonna say, you know, so just say with cost, and unless, the parent would be okay with that. But what, the mom, I didn't, I forget the mom, like, she had a seventh grader, a senior, so she just asked, I'm like, I don't know, I'll find out. But cost is the moment she hang her hat on. And we, that's fine.
Yeah, that, I, and actually, that would have been before I.
Yeah, that would, you would have been doing it.
But since I've been here, we've explored other options, and they haven't been great. I mean, they just has, it has effects enough, so. I've, I've been on board with it, just because as we try to research other things, it's, it's not any better. And cost is the big one, cost jumps way up if you take a Saturday night downtown Indianapolis or any, if you do a Friday night. There, and even the downtown, like, if you go and you park and you get in and out of there, like, it's different downtown. Like, you can park somewhere, you can walk, and you go down on a Saturday night, downtown is, is crazy. I mean, try to find a parking spot, try to do things like that for kids. And so I even feel more comfortable with them there, just knowing that, like, the downtown is not crazy when they go in and out of there. It's very easy for them to park and get in and out, and so just having gone each year, like, I see that benefit, again, mainly cost. Um, there, there are other things, graduation, I don't know if there's anything that, other topics, um, other than that, it's, if there are any really major updates, anything for us, um, not too much. Are there any questions you might have on how things are going down here?
So what's it gonna look like this year? Does it kind of look different, like, on stage, or graduation, yes?
Well, I did talk to the last board meeting a little bit about it, but I could probably clarify a bit. Um, it's pretty, I mean, it's, as far as the ceremony itself, it's the same, same general setup. The kids will have them inside, they'll walk out, kind of do their loop around the track. Um, the seats will be a little closer together, since we don't have to worry about spacing as much. So that might tighten that look up a little bit. Um, and, I, yeah, the program itself, as far as the diploma part of it, I mean, that would be the only part, because we haven't done that in a couple of years. So each of you would have a, a set list of names, so if, if there's a certain part, like, you would have the alphabet with your, your son in there, obviously.
I get the news.
What's that?
I get the news.
As long as I can use your sub.
You can have this for awards.
As long as I get the moral picture with it.
That's right.
So, if, uh, and then all we would ask is like, if you have. If, and then all we would ask is like, if you have other, other students that you know, like maybe it's your neighbor or whoever it is that you would just coordinate at that point in time to just step up and do that. It's, it's very difficult to organize all of it if we get a, a list of names. It's just on the, on the back end of what that creates in terms of how their, how the program runs, it's very difficult. So we tried that for a couple of years. It got very chaotic. We got a lot of complaints about it on, on our end of how that process worked. Mainly I, my first two years, I got a number of them after graduation went over. Saying I don't understand why graduation's more important for some kids than it is for others. Like we're, we're making a special case and we're putting on a show for some and we're not for others. So, so we're trying to keep it seamless. Like every kid that walks across the stage is, is the same for every kid that walks across the stage. So actually you're there before they walk across the stage. So on the back end, we kinda had them come up and then we got, like we did all, there's not room on the stage really to do all of that anyway. Where they set up outside. So you're there before, so if you have someone that's not in your list, then you would, you would just coordinate to then hand them that as they come up and do that. So it's before, so once they get to the stage and they walk up, it's just the two of us and every kid walks across the stage and takes their picture and walks off the stage, so.
And the students aren't limited to certain number of tickets this year, right?
Right. And we'll see how that goes. I mean, that was the goal, that's all, that's always just been very important to me. So I guess that's where my own personal preference steps in. So that can always change, but I just, I don't know why, but maybe for my first graduation, it just bothered me that we had to tell people, I'm sorry, if anyone can't come to graduation. And as long as we had it in the gym, that was always gonna be the case, it's gonna be here's your four tickets. The rest of you can go either sit in performing arts center. Now, at that point, we couldn't stream, so now we do have the streaming option, which does provide people to these squads, which we were trying to do in the, in the pack, but. So in year five, we'll get, finally get to the point where we can tell parents that, just on the graduation. Bring your grandma, grandpa, all those.
We have all been putting them out, streaming out there again, but we just gotta believe we.
Yep.
Make that happen.
Yeah. I do think that even though the idea of how we were doing graduation, I had from the start, like the COVID idea kinda pushed us into doing some things that I think is really good. Now that we can stream it, again, we get compliments of like, oh, my grandma in Arizona, I got to watch graduation. So, so we're gonna keep doing that, so we'll still have the live stream, we'll have a link, we'll pick it out so everybody can watch and.
I watched in Colorado, I was like, you guys are freezing.
Now that we, that's.
I was at our hotel going, you guys are cold.
So we kicked out information yesterday, so we, we will still get graduation in as soon, as close to ten o'clock as we can, so.
Are you getting the first one if it's burned too?
You never know, I mean, is there gonna be like, it's too cold to have it outside? Or we need to just push it back later in the day, something like that.
Well, yeah, that's what we, we sent out yesterday and just saying like, we'll look at it. It would need to be on the extreme, which maybe last year we ordered on that a little bit, but.
I remember watching those court girls in their little dresses and no hose and sandals and I thought, oh.
So.
Yeah, so I just felt bad for them.
But there isn't really an inside option that will be very manageable, so that would really have to. We'd rather really have some problems. Yeah, so it would have to, and then that, the workload on doing that would immense. So, so yes, our goal would just is keep, I mean, we would just keep pushing it back. If there's something that would force us, then, you know, like let's say it's in the morning and a storm's going through and there's lightning and it's, and we know we can get out there, then we kinda keep an eye on it. We just communicate out, social media, email, through the kids, like there's many different ways that we can push it out and just say, hey, we're starting at one o'clock. And, you know, we would just get it in as soon as we possibly could and if something rolled through and good, then we'd be out there wiping down chairs and getting it ready and just running it as quickly as we can. So and then we had to push it to the evening, we pushed it to the evening, whatever.
Yeah, I, I think instead of saying pushing it, but keep pushing it hour by hour by hour. Cause there, because you have graduation parties on those days.
Yeah.
So that would screw it up. I wonder if you just say, okay, we're gonna either do it at ten AM or five PM or something like that, so they know if you're planning your party. Cause they do have them and they've rented places and they do, you know, I don't know, and then that would help them.
But if it rolls through and then the window is from eleven to three and then it rolls back in at five o'clock. So I mean, the idea would be like, when, when, when's as quickly as we get it in, so.
You're gonna have a lot of homecoming if you, you know. I think as long as you make it very clear that any time on that day graduation could happen, please don't skip me. You might think about, you might even say anything about that when you're planning your parties or whatever, I don't know. You know, we'd rather later remember the next week. You know, and just, it's just one of those things, as a mom, you think about that, yeah. It was brought up, they copied superintendent this week. They just wanted to know like, what, were the rain conditions?
Yeah.
I know. There's no easy way, it's hard to hide.
You're not gonna be arguing.
So I, I think we'll, and I do think, I think people are saying, we can't go inside. The, the inside, you can't, it's still the, so everybody goes to the gym, we're gonna.
I mean, if we got forced to that, I mean, one, we, we would have to, you know, quickly. And we, we do, my emphasis on that, but we'd have to quickly say, well, you can only bring three people in and we're gonna run you across the stage. And so I mean, the alternative's not, not perfect either, so. So I.
So it's either Fri-, it's either Saturday or Sunday, correct? Those two days are days for any graduation, is that correct?
Yeah, and in, and every, every single possible attempt to get it done on Saturday. Like, I mean, that's, that's what we would do, so.
Kind of like the race, I went to the race on the Tuesday.
Was that?
The year, the, the, as you find.
Yeah.
Kind of like the race.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna have this section where, I mean, just, where we can come send our parents or our families can send close so they can see, so we reserve section for board members and families.
Board members are, I mean, you'll be, you'll be up there.
Board members, families, so I thought we were doing that.
Like we've had it pass, we had outside gym, it was like a VIP area for teachers and.
Teachers, yeah.
And there's always been a little section of teachers where, like, so I remember Bonnie Thompson would come and, you know. Grandparents and like, I remember families involved.
Yeah, we can, we can do that. I don't, it wasn't in, I don't know, I don't remember.
We've had that.
Okay. Okay.
And it's not that, I think we have like three rows, four rows, so we should have a big section.
Okay, I'll prob-, I probably would be down on the track, I would guess. I mean, I'd, it'll be, all the teacher seating's kinda the same. So I don't, if it were to be like VIP seating or something, then I probably would have to be down on the track. My guess is, cause our handicap seating will be on the visitor's side, we put that all there. So we'll probably be on the home side, like probably down on the track there is where we have our. And it probably would just be chairs down, just down there.
You're doing a good job.
You are. Appreciate it. Got a good, good group of people to work with. I, I, probably January, February, we're just ready for the year to be over. And you know, we just got through, like the, the fall was just so rough. I mean, people were struggling with a lot of stuff and as you know, you felt it. Just struggling with a lot of topics, it was, it was a rough semester in terms of just trying to fight your way back to the normal, but knowing that we just kinda weren't ready for it yet. And then the same thing in January and February, and now that we've gotten back into school, I'm not really wanting school year to. I'm not, I'm not wishing away this school year, like we really are kinda like now in a, a settled mode. It feels like we're in school and it's running smoothly and now I'm kinda like not wishing it away. The senior groups have been really good, especially considering, you know, the last few years. They, I think they, it's almost a feeling that they're kinda getting in a rhythm with everything, although they're seniors, so they're ready to move on. But it's just been, I don't feel, I mean, I felt worse about it here in January than I do now. Like now I just feel like they're kinda rolling with stuff, so. So that's some optimism for next year, I think. We've got a lot of things that we need to clean up that, like. Things like attendance and parties, truancy, just different policies. I mean, that's probably one of our big programs over the summer that we've been. We've been in this mode where it's like, hey, if you've got this simple, stay home. If you've got a headache, stay home. Anything that comes up, you're just kinda like, just don't come in. And so now we've kinda created this mode of like, well, it's not that important that I come in. So attendance numbers, being here on time, getting to class on time, staying in class, like, it's nothing bad. But I had a conversation with an administrator last night, and he was saying the exact same thing at their school. He's like, we've got to get this rain back in. And I think we even see it from parents that it's like, well, I mean, we're gonna be gone for three days. Like they can just do their work at home and like, we'll come back in and then it'll be fine. And like, sure, we've kind of adapted to that and we're able to like, but it's not, it's not a good thing. And so, and the idea is more like even filtering down to our kids, it's not that important that I'm at school. It's not that important that I'm there on time, it's not. So we've got, we've just gotta start next year with like, yes, it is, yes, it is, you have to be here, you have to be here on time. Teachers, you have to follow the process. I mean, you know, we've done a lot of stuff with grades on like grades, like you can turn it in whenever, you can get it here. I know you've got, like, we've just all been really supportive and, and it's laxed in some ways. And we, we need students to understand, like, it is important that you do your work and it is important that you do it on time and that you come to school and all of those things. So we've got some work to do going into next school year. But I feel like we're getting there, that's what feels bad about, like, we're starting to get back into that. It feels like we're, kids are coming around and we're getting back into it and then school's gonna be out. So if it's that reset, we can come back to next year.
So you're definitely not the only one with that relaxed attitude, it's probably district-wide where it's trying to get back.
So we're actually changing attendance policy.
Statewide. Everyone I talk to.
And we're ready, we're gonna change, clarify, 'cause I would agree, we're seeing kids miss lots of days and saying, well, I can get it done. And it's not just us, I was talking to Johnson County superintendent, they had to see this ninety day of school. Oh, okay. And that's a lot, you know, but they're doing virtual, turning their stuff in, they're playing that. But we're gonna, Brooke, Brooke's working on it, she's gonna, she's gotta define how she's gonna get it right. Probably in the May or June, we're gonna bring the policy back to you all to prove, get in our handbooks and clarify right up front about our attendance, which will help, Steve will help everybody, so yeah.
Well, 'cause the turnout is, we're, we're seeing interns coming in that, that have that same attitude. So you want me to turn it on Friday? Well, I'll give it a go anyway, so. It's like, no, this is now you're being paid.
Yeah, right.
This is your line.
That's right. And so, yeah, that's a great thing that we gotta drive into already, you know, there are requirements. Even if you're working virtual, there's still requirements to drive into it.
And I think it's important for our, our district and our people to not feel like that's someone's fault. Like, you know, that, I'm not saying that because I'm sitting here, but like, it's, I don't know. It's easy to like internalize that and be like, we're just doing a really bad job. Like this is not going well, but it's like societal, like every administrator I talk to in every building, it doesn't matter where they're at, say the same thing. Our kids just walk out of class, our kids go to the restroom and stay for twenty minutes and we gotta pull them out. They don't come to class, they just, like all these things that you're like, what is going on here? Like, but it's, it's every building and like every district, like everyone's dealing with it. So I do think it's a societal shift that we have to get back to. Like some of these like norms of school and different things were pretty important. Like we may have had to like lax on them to like be supportive and, and make it through a rough time. But like, we do have to get back to them, like they do have to know that they have to do certain things. And so, yeah, I, I think we can get there. And like I said, I think we're seeing signs up here, that's what kind of, like surprisingly, get to the end of the year and like, you know, it's May, and oh, man, things are just crazy, but I'm like, I wish we could kinda keep going 'cause I feel like our kids are getting it, we're starting to get back into it, so. Hope it picks back up in August. And our end, we're like, from day one, we need to make sure that like, if it's attendance stuff, we're like, we got our policies, we got our way to do it, like everybody needs to do it, we need to get back. And then on the back end, our parents are gonna have to be like, accepting of the fact that like, okay, my kid may have a detention denied or they may have a night school because they're not, that may have worked a year ago or two years, it doesn't work anymore. So like, we're trying to get back to what, the way that we should be running things. So I think that's might be where it gets felt somewhere along the line is when the truancy letters go out, when the detentions are, you know, when we just have to start putting things in place to say it's not okay that we keep doing this, that some of that heat will start to, to be felt. And so when we tell the, Rick John and our teachers the same thing, so hold the, they pull the line. You know, you gotta get back to it, so.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. It can happen, close, oh, okay, we're done.